Okay, okay.
You gonna do both?
I think so.
Okay. Good evening. It's six o'clock PM, so I'll take roll call.
Everyone, the president except for Jade Hall.
Okay, having a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Monday, May 5th. This is the Board of Trustees meeting for Wabash City Schools. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We have two recognitions tonight. We have Kenley McWort, who is our valedictorian, and Emma Weaver, who is the salutatorian. We're gonna have them.
Yes, can you guys stand up? Tell us where you're going to college, what you're majoring in, and what was your most favorite thing about high school?
I'm going to Johnson University in Tennessee, and I will be majoring in youth ministry with a double major in Bible and theology. And my favorite thing about high school has probably been the sports and all my friends and community.
I'm Weaver, I'm going to Ivy Fort Wayne for dental hygiene. And my favorite memory about high school was the connections I made with other people on my team, especially the X team.
Anything that the board would like to ask them? Okay. Congratulations, this shows years of hard work and perseverance.
Thank you. We have one revision. It's to approve revision 4.O. to P. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on an agenda item? Okay. Onto the consent agenda. We have minutes from April. Okay. We have minutes from April 21st, 2025. Some claims, there's no donations, and there's no financials tonight. Accept a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, May 19th, 2025, here at Wabash City Hall at 6 o'clock PM. There's some items of communications. There is no old business tonight, new business. We have a Wabash High School Student Council update. Okay.
So I am Trevor Herron, I am the student body president.
I'm Cameron Wilcox, and student body vice president.
So what are we doing on student council? So we are kind of finishing our year. We're finishing up our service project, Cancer for Cause. We have revised our date for when we're kind of finishing this up. It was originally, I think, at the end of this week, but we've moved it another week back. So May 16th, we'll be kind of finishing up. We'll be collecting all the remaining supplies we have of our aluminum. We'll be taking that and we'll be selling it to the middle source. We have actually chosen a cause. I'm not at liberty yet to announce it. I'm waiting to kind of get confirmation from them that they're accepting it. Once they do that, you should be seeing the announcement, if not the school announcements, as soon as we get that. We are having a senior sun sunset, which is just a kind of a cool event that we do as a way, just this. We did a senior sunrise at the beginning of the year, now we're kind of doing our senior sun yet. We're sunset, we're kind of at our end of the year. That'll be happening on May 16th at 8:00 PM on Luthley Field. Seniors who are interested in doing that, we encourage them to RSVP just on their email there. Abby Hippskin has sent them emails, so. So as we are coming to our end of year, I just want to highlight just some of our accomplishments that we have done on student council this past year. So we've had 13 student council meetings this past year. We had four events. We had Homecoming Week, Harvest Fall, Powder Puff for Fish, and we had four spectaculars. And I just want to highlight once again that 149 attendees for that event. We had one new service project where so far we've had 77 pounds of aluminum that we've been able to recycle. We are approximating to maybe double that number, once we sell off our current supply. We had one food drive of, we ended up having 5,380 items, as well as $1,971 that we were able to donate to fish. We fortified a mission, which is, as follows, to facilitate and encourage student participation in school in school events and activities. And then we also created a logo to be able to kind of organize our branding and everything that we would have on Instagram and other social media platforms. So we have elected our next year, 2025, 2026, student council being led by senior J.C. Jones, and then her student body vice president is Virginia Bailey. So congratulations to those who were elected.
So for our spring athletics, we have track and field for the boys. Colson Kubler broke the school record in the 400 meter dash with a time of 49.88, which the previous time of 49.90, set by Brian DeBoer in 1993. He also broke his own 200 record with a time of 21.87, and multiple others ran new PRs for themselves as well. The track and field girls, Anadotry, broke the 800 meter record previously held by Katherine Wilhelm, and both their senior nights for this past Friday. Girls softball also just won there, the Lady Apaches Classic, defeating Taylor and North Miami. And they're 7-7 on the record, on the year. For boys baseball, they are 7-9 on the season, and they did have a game today at Rochester at 5:30. And then for girls tennis, they just had their first win Saturday, and they keep improving more and more each week. And then for boys golf, they have a golf match at home tomorrow at 8:00, or May 6th, and they're improving more and more as the season continues.
So for our clubs and organizations, this past Friday, I think it was, we had our theater program put on, our show of Grease. That's led up by Mrs. France and Mr. Ireland. It was a massive success. They are planning to do another musical in the spring of 2026. The auditorium was half-full for both nights, so that's a pretty good size of attendees that did end up coming. The only things that were heard to be bad was just some of the sound and lighting, but other than that, just nothing but compliments. We also have our prom committee. Prom is this Saturday at the Honeywell Center, it's May 10th, and it's a midnight masquerade theme. There's going to be a dance competition going on, as well as a coronation for our prom king and queen. Post-prom is set to take place shortly after that, and it's taking place at the 1324 Drive-In. Gates will open at 11:00 PM, and that's done by SAD by Ms. Clement.
So some other things to note that are happening at Wabash. Seniors, check your Skyworks reporting senior information and dates. There's also an Ivy Tech graduation this Friday, May 9th, and then our high school graduation is May 30th.
And then we have approximately 13 days left.
Approximately?
Approximately, yeah. I stopped putting too much faith into my numbers since getting back to the top, so. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We've appreciated the updates all year.
Yes, I hope and I put forth my recommendation for next year that they continue.
Okay, item B. Board to approve the purchasing of American Express cards for the following employees. Kimberly Hodson, who's a Japan chaperone, Joshua Blossom, who's the middle school and high school principal, and Beth Philippi, OJ Neighbors' principal. Each of these employees will be traveling with students to Japan or staff professional development this summer. Each employee will sign documentation that they understand the WCS credit card policy. Cards will be held at the administration office and only distributed to such employees upon dates needed for their particular event, and then returned to the admin office with receipts when returning. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
First, this is a purchasing card. We're not purchasing an American Express card. We did this last year with Mr. Chittenden when he traveled with the group to Japan. We're requesting that Mrs. Hodson have one, since she's going with them this summer. We also are requesting that Mr. Blossom and Mrs. Philippi, they will be going along with myself. We have a group of 13 that are going to the Model Schools Conference. And whenever we go to dinner, it's just a whole lot easier for us to put it on a school card, and then we can get those receipts submitted, instead of each individual person doing a receipt and having to turn something in. So this will allow both Mr. Blossom and Mrs. Philippi to have a card. That way, if we have groups going in different directions, different places to eat, they'll have a card that they can charge everything, and it just makes things a lot easier for reimbursements. Mrs. Hodson's card will have a $10,000 limit, since she is going out of the country, and Mrs. Philippi and Mr. Blossom's would be $5,000. And as we stated, once the trips are over, they do return those to central office, and we store them in the vault.
Questions from the board?
What conference are you going to?
It's the Model Schools Conference.
Where is that?
It's in National Harbor, Maryland.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the cards, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item C. Board to approve an out-of-state professional development trip to High Tech High in San Diego, California, May 6th, 2025 through May 10th, 2025, for Joshua Blossom, Randy Lapage, Sean Eiler, Kyle Kelshimer, and Justin Denny. Participants will gain hands-on experience in project-based learning and preparation for year one of the Wabash High School PCAP program. This trip is fully funded through the PCAP grant. Accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This training, like you said, will provide professional development to our teachers who will be implementing the PCAP program. PCAP is, we have a group of students, incoming freshmen, that will be co-horted together, and they will have math, English, and the industrial technology classes all together, and they really work to make their lessons hands-on, or problem-based. And so it's incorporating, how do we, project-based, how do we utilize math and language arts in these project-based lessons? And the school that they are going to is one of the top project-based learning high schools in the country. And so they're kind of a training ground. They have schools come in, they get to spend time there, and just learn how they develop their lessons and incorporate all of the math, language arts, and the industrial tech standards.
Is the class offered as in a unit of time?
Yes.
Okay, so the kids will be together?
Yeah.
Maybe two?
Two or three periods, yeah.
Two or three periods.
Yeah, and.
What's it, are they recommended? Is it based on teacher recommendation?
That, and we also look at, we look at their test scores and their grades. So it's, we're targeting a group of kids that we hope are going to get in there, and hands-on learning is, they're going to find is their passion.
And there. There was one other thing. Will they develop their own curriculum then, these teach?
Yes.
Sean and Kyle, and, okay.
And the trip is fully funded through the PCAP grant.
My guess is this will be probably pretty helpful for them as we go into the new educational requirements that are coming out, like, right?
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the trip, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item D. Board to approve a change to the 2025 through 2026 calendar. January 19th, 2025 is MLK Day. The calendar should read MLK Day, Makeup Day, if needed. I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this was really just a typo on our original. This year, we had MLK Day as a makeup day, and we want that again next year, and we just left off that little makeup day if needed. So we're just going to add that on. Hopefully, we won't need it, but just in case.
All those in favor of approving the change, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item E. Board to accept the recommendation to approve employee number 12536, leave from May 12th through August 8th, 2025. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I recommend the board approve this leave request.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F. Board to accept the recommendation to approve employee number 6379 FMLA leave beginning May 7th through May 9th, 2025.
So moved.
My second.
Discussion.
I recommend the board approve this FMLA leave request.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. G. Accept the recommendation to transfer Kristin Hoppus from a four-year-old preschool teacher to full-time sped teacher beginning the 2025 through 2026 school year.
So moved.
Second.
So two years ago, when Lori Gunderman retired, we did not replace her. And Mrs. Higgins has been coming in one day a week and spending time in our preschool classes, serving as a teacher of record for several of our preschool students. And she's let us know that she just doesn't have time to be able to do that. So one, we appreciate the help that she's given us for two years, but we do need to add another special ed teacher at LH. And so Mrs. Hoppus has the license, so she will move into that. She will work with four-year-olds, but she will also work with, well, she'll work with three and four-year-olds, but she'll also work with some of the kindergarten students. So her and Stacy Bear will really split the caseload between the two of them.
Okay. Questions from the board? All those in favor of accepting the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item H. Board to approve Natasha Whitney as WMS summer school teacher at an hourly rate of $35 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Whitney will be our middle school summer school teacher. This is, will be for seventh and eighth graders that are recommended. It runs Monday through Thursday, starting May 27th through June 19th. She will pay, be paid three and a half hours per day, and we appreciate her willingness to be our middle school summer school teacher.
Is that all online, the summer?
Some of it will be. I mean, they come in, the students come in each day.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item I. Board to approve Ashley Pelfrey as WMS summer school para-professional at a pay rate of $11 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Pelfrey will be our middle school para. She is a high school para now, so she's familiar with our students. She will be paid three hours per day for the 15 hours, and we appreciate her willingness to work summer school.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Is it three hours per 15 days?
Three hours per day.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. J. Board to accept the resignation of Brandy Brubaker, effective April 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We want to thank Ms. Brubaker for her time and service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Item K. Board to accept the resignation of Maria Inesta, effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Sadly seconded.
Discussion.
Mrs. Inesta has served as our kindergarten DLI teacher for the last three years. She was an awesome addition to the program, and we're really sad to see her return to Spain. However, we understand they want to get back with family, so we wish her and her family nothing but the best.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item L. Board to approve the resignation of Ashar Kelshimer as corporation nurse slash OJ Neighbors' nurse, effective May 30th, 2025. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Kelshimer has been the corporation nurse and OJ nurse for the past six years. She's done a spectacular job, and we absolutely hate to see her leave. She is looking forward to being able to spend more time with her family, and I can understand that desire. She said that she will be willing to sub for us, so we're thankful that she will stay connected with us.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item M. Board to approve Melanie Honeycutt's retirement, effective May 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Honeycutt has served as the director of food service for 23 years. Over those years, she has made sure that our students receive nutritious meals, not only during the summer, or not only during the school year, but also during the summer, and we just greatly appreciate the work that she has done and wish her the best in retirement.
All those in favor of approving the retirement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item N. Recommend, recommend for the 2025 summer food service program that the following employees work as needed at their hourly or daily rate, or subpay or stipend. Megan Harrell, 40 hours. Justin Turner, 40 hours. Brittany Judy, 37.5 hours. Linda Miracle, 37.5 hours. Shelley Ford, 32.5 hours. Diane White, 18 hours. Alina Perkins, 18 hours. Cassie Honeycutt, 12 hours. And Erin Frye, 12 hours. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So Mrs. Harrell, who is our assistant food service director and will be taking over when Melanie retires, is recommending these cafeteria employees to run the summer food service. I went through and compared it to last year's recommendation, and she did reduce the headcount for summer employees by three, and the total hours by 142.5 hours. So we appreciate that she is still providing the summer food program, but is really working to make it more cost-effective.
And we're still going to have it at OJ and the middle school?
I believe so. Those were the only two places we added.
Yeah, there was one, there's one place in the county that's not going to do it anymore. So that one went away, but it wasn't our. Yeah, it was Bedona or Lucas. Okay.
And we will make sure that that information gets out through Parent Square and social media.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item O. Board to approve the use of the middle school facility for a first responders' youth camp for June 23rd through June 27th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Officer Hippskin is working to put this camp on. It will be not only for our students, but students throughout the county. There are many agencies, police, fire, emergency responders, just to name a few, that will be coming together to help educate our students on the roles and responsibilities of these various agencies. I recommend that we waive the facility rental fee for this camp, as it is for our students, and it's run by our school resource officer.
Is this a free camp?
Yes.
Awesome.
How many hours a day, Sam?
Not enough for the parents.
But plenty for you.
Around 8:30 to 4:00.
Oh, wow, that's huge.
Are you teaching first aid and?
CPR, first aid.
CPR.
Fire safety kind of things.
Fire safety, water safety.
What, what's the age group?
We're going to go eight through 10. Think if we can get them excited, hit the Heartland Career Center at that time, they can go to the law enforcement class out there.
Oh, so moved. Good, that sounds awesome. How many, what's the enrollment right now, do you know? How many kids have?
Once we approve this, they'll get sent out tomorrow.
Is there a limit?
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a limit?
We're not going to put a limit on it, though.
Okay.
Cool.
Awesome.
Is there going to be some publicity for the city to know what's going on? In case you put a siren off, you know, everyone in town's not freaking out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the waiving of, wait, approving of the facility usage, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, thank you.
Item P. Board to approve employee number 12078 FMLA leave from May 2nd, 2025 through May 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I recommend the board approve this FMLA leave request.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, I want to start by congratulating Kenley McWort and Emma Weaver on being the valedictorian and salutatorian. I know that that took a lot of hard work, and you should be very proud of yourself. I want to thank our high school student council. We have enjoyed having you. You guys did a great year, so we'll let the next group know they have a high bar to live up to. The students that were in Grease, it was amazing. I saw Jade at it, and I told her that when they started singing Summer Nights, I almost started crying. Like, I got a little teary, just because it brought back my childhood, and they were doing such a great job. We only have 13 days of school left, but we have a ton of activities. Tomorrow is OJ's reenactment. I won't share too much. Beth probably will share some stuff on that. I did watch the video advertisement that they posted on Facebook, and I'm really excited to attend. This Friday, we host the TRC conference track meet. We have a middle school, high school choir concert on May 14th. We have fourth grade graduation on May 15th, kindergarten promotion on May 19th. We have our middle school award ceremony on May 21st, and the senior scholarship program on May 22nd. And then graduation is May 30th in Coolman Gym. We will have one more big idea event during the school year on May 21st, and we do want families to know that we will continue to do those in the summer. So just because school's out doesn't mean those are over. So we'll make sure that we let people know that they can come back in June and July.
Great. Items from COO.
I just want to say congratulations to Melanie and thank her for all those years of running our cafeteria and food service. She's done a great job caring about our kids, and I think that's all you really can ask of anyone. So congratulations to her, and hopefully she enjoys some time alone.
Other items from visitors?
So I.
Or, I'm sorry, items from administrators? I'm sorry.
I want to also say that about Melanie and Shar, I'll show her too. She's going to be in the OJ district right now. And then, yes, reenactment tomorrow. Looks like weather's going to be okay, then put rain on my news. And so she'll be there until 4:00 to 5:30. We've been popping popcorn all day today, so we're glad they're selling that, happy and rock candy. Kids have worked really, really hard. Teachers have done a great job of starting to bring this back like it used to be. I'm sure many of you remember how love that was, so we're excited.
And it's just fourth grade, right?
Fourth grade is because it's attached to the essential standards. So they're the ones who are doing most of it, but we knew how students in other grades were participating, that you had support for.
Okay. Other items from visitors, I'm sorry.
Reminded by Cameron, and I'm surprised Mr. Hippskin was throwing stuff at me. So we are having another car crash this year, put on by the Student Safety Council. I believe it's Friday, yeah. So it'll be Friday, so there'll be, I'm actually being a victim this year. So I spoke last year on a microphone, but this year I get to actually be inside of the car. So it's locked, locked.
What time?
What time, Mr. Hippskin? I believe around 2:55-ish, 3-ish, once the students get out there after 7:00 period.
What day?
We will put that out, so.
Yeah. Might want to let the parents from OJ know because of traffic and stuff.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. Items from board members. We'll start with you, Joan.
I believe next week, I just saw this on Facebook, the National Honor Society from the middle school is having a food drive, because they want to dump someone in the pool on pool day. And they collect like 500 cans or something or other. I don't know who is going in, but someone's going in that pool.
Okay. Jason?
So May seems to be one of the busiest months of the year. And so, first of all, thanks to all the teachers. It's a teacher appreciation week, and I know that the, OJ had Sundays today, and the rest of the week, there's, throughout the school district, there's others getting that treat. So thank you for all the teachers and what you guys do, day in and day out. Appreciate that. I also went to the Grease. I know you didn't say anything about it, but it was awesome. I was there, too. It was really cool. I, I'm not a theater person. I like going to theater, but I'm not a singer by any stretch, by like theater standards. The supporting cast were awesome, just as much as the people who were like named as the main characters. And so I was blown away by some of the people who did sing up there. That was really cool. So kudos to Mrs. France and Mr. Ireland for all that they put into that and took that on. That was huge. Also, Levi failed Fairchild, and I can't remember Cole's last name for the life. There it is, okay, thank you. Went to Vincennes's last weekend and graduated with their associate's degrees. Maybe I shouldn't even talk about that, I can't remember it all. But I know Levi, he walked away with a magnate cum laude delio on his shoulders, so that was really cool to see. And so I want to put that out there. And lastly, I just saw some chatter about the questions about, like, why are we looking at potentially, while we have nine potentially, but why is middle school and high school combining? And I just. And I just know that it's a lot about efficiency and a lot about just doing something we're already kind of doing anyways and making it, utilizing our, our resources in a better way. And so I know there's a lot of chatter out there and I just want, hopefully people, if they really have questions, they reach out to the school central office, even administrators, instead of just going to Facebook and hoping that they're going to get all the wonderful answers that way.
Connie.
I think it's so cool, you guys. The food drive was really big when I taught. One year we collected 10,000 items and filled the corner of the gym, the high school gym. And the gentleman came from Fish to collect it and he was in a little Ranger Danger pickup truck. And he came in and our student council sponsor says, your truck isn't big enough. And the gentleman came in and he started to cry. And you guys don't know who you're feeding. And it could be the kid next to you in class and that kind of thing. And when you look out in the classroom and you wonder, you know, who's going to have supper tonight and who isn't? And you're addressing that and that's so cool that you're, that you're pushing that again. Because there isn't enough that we can do for kids. So it's really great. And congratulations on graduation. I know it's a scary time. You know, the most common gift is money and luggage. You know, one of your parents telling you there. So I wish you the best and my biggest hope is that Wabash has prepared you well. You know, in the early college, that's why I asked earlier, because that's going to save a bundle of money for you and that kind of thing. So way to go. I never heard anybody, and to the valedictorian salutatorian, I never heard a kid graduate and say, gee, I'm sorry, I made good grades, you know? It translates, it translates into success. It translates into money at city schools. We have a wonderful scholarship program. It's just great. So I'm very proud of you guys. Way to go.
Thank you. I wanted to say that our esports team.
Saved it for you. I didn't.
We have an esports team and they do really well. The Rocket League team went to state and they won state. And then we had another, there was another kid who went as well, but I can't remember what his name is or what he played in. So I, I believe they're coming next board meeting and so I'm sure that Mr. Burns or Mr. Mendoc will explain that. But it's really, esports seems kind of silly, but it's not. If there's really, it's becoming big and big in colleges. Ball State has a building for their esports. They're giving away scholarships, like full rides to go play these, these esports at college. So I encourage anybody who is interested in video games to maybe look into going out for the team next year because it, it really is neat. Dan and I went this year to watch it again and it's just fun. It's hype. There's tons of kids there.